Yes.
Okay, Nanette, can you take the roll call, please?
Yes. Janay McDonald.
Present.
Mary Kate Mearan. Bill Johnson. Elizabeth Bosito.
Present.
And Alessandra Anderson. I know Alice Anderson, so.
I see her. I didn't hear her. I didn't know if that was just me.
She's muted, but she's in. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, now we're going to move to the first item on our agenda, which is the discussion with all unit Congress, and tonight's topic will be models of shared governance.
That's my cue. Thank you. And again, we greatly appreciate the opportunity and the invitation to discuss our topic tonight. If I could just very quickly, though, I do want to acknowledge the recent Netchy visit, the site visit, and our bodies' participation in that visit. I know that there were many times that our members spoke their minds. It was not easy at times. And the readout, the final readout did not directly address many of the issues we brought up, but I think we did demonstrate our compassion and dedication to Springfield Technical Community College. So I just wanted to acknowledge our membership's participation in that. And I know we all were a part of that operation. So we have shared a short article with you, and obviously, I'm not going to read it. But I think if we read the title, we can essentially get a summary of the entire contents. And that is simply colleges with healthy shared governance perform better in crises than those with top-down decision-making. Another working title I have is colleges with shared governance do well during the COVID-19 crisis, because specifically, I think that's the context that we are looking at here. So I'd like to sort of include our model in talking about the highlights of this article. The article, by the way, was written by Marjorie Haas, the president of Rhodes College in Memphis, Tennessee. Her vision that she expresses here is a commitment to transparency, dialogue, trust, and communication. We know many of these have been challenging for all of us in the last year-plus. Some of those challenges have been met better than others. But getting to the issue of communication specifically, I would like to acknowledge, and I won't have to repeat myself any longer, because we have gotten word recently, just in the last few days, that Dr. Casey Senni and her team have created for us a mailing list that we will use to analyze our model in the all-unit Congress. And that will be by way of a member survey, an assessment survey. No timeframe on getting that out, but we'd like to get it out soon. This is May. It's a little bit difficult to do that perhaps now. But that will certainly offer us data on how we are serving our membership, and if there's anything that our model can do to improve. We also have a climate survey. I believe I've mentioned that in the past. That can go out probably quicker, because I believe that's fully developed. And that, again, will provide us with more data regarding the model of governance and the climate, obviously, on campus, which has been an ongoing issue for the last year-plus. One of the things that's mentioned in the article as well is responsiveness, which is something that has been a real challenge during COVID. And I just wanted to share a small example that I don't think I've shared before. Last summer, as it was becoming extremely apparent that we were going to be working remotely, probably indefinitely, we formed an ad hoc committee that we called the End User Technology Committee. And essentially, what this committee did was gather survey data of our membership to give opinions and information about what online tech tools we thought we would like to be using during the COVID crisis. And this information was shared with the Campus Technology Tools Group. And the results did favor Zoom, which I think was probably not a surprise. But I think it was really important that we got that information and that we were able to participate in decision-making as far as how we could make our online remote experience as easy as possible, even though, as I said, nothing really about this has been easy. I believe Francie has some more information about other elements of the article. Francie?
Yeah, thanks, Eric. So we thought this article, we just keep coming back to this article, because it just kind of illuminates a lot of the things that we we think are really important. And it does point out three three important primary elements that help shared governance be successful. And we really do feel like if shared governance is successful, if the if the decision-making process at the college is successful, then everyone is more efficient and our students win, because when we're more efficient, we can spend the most time with our students and taking taking them into account, which is what we do. Transparency is in communicating financial realities of the college is outlined as one thing that's very important. And one very helpful step in that direction of transparency is that we now receive the trustees' packets and can share those in our regular AUC news updates that go out every week or so to the AUC. So being able to fully review the information in the packets makes it easier to understand and to get on board with choices that are made at the college. Whereas previously, I think there was, it was hard to figure out exactly what was happening and and understand why choices were being made. Building a culture of trust is something that's absolutely important and and just helps everything run better. So building trust, it really does take time and requires patience. The campus is working towards building trust between employees and administration, because when decisions are built on trust, again, we can spend more time and effort on our students instead of like racing after answers to questions that that we don't feel have been addressed. If employees trust that decisions are made in the best interests of students, we'll be on board. I think the times where we find ourselves really coming up against a rock and a hard place is when when we don't understand why things are happening. The most recent town hall meeting gave us an opportunity for employees to speak about their concerns. And the structure of the webinar was opened up for maximum participation from employees, which we were really grateful for. Time didn't allow for all questions to be asked, but Eric and I will be following up with administration to make sure that questions and concerns are heard. And the last thing that the article points out, the last bullet in the article, is inclusion. Creating inclusive teams so that multiple perspectives can be considered is an important thing in shared governance. So one thing that has made this hard is that people of color have been leaving the college for years and continue to leave. Diversity is a strength, and we see this as a strength. And losing so many of our colleagues has been heartbreaking to employees and to students, and detrimental to our students and our success. Understanding the reasons behind the exodus will ensure that we can hold on to the community that we all appreciate so much and that works so effectively to serve our students. Listening to the voices who are clearly speaking will make this college stronger. And we think that the moves that we're making towards greater trust and transparency and including all voices are really important. We really want to thank you for allowing us to speak again tonight on behalf of the all-unit Congress. And are there any questions?
Thank you. I also want to say I'm really excited to know that you all received some of the information that you've requested since last meeting, which is going to help you all have maximum reach for some of your organizing and things like that amongst the all-unit Congress. So that's really good to know. You know, thank you for joining us for this meeting and, you know, sharing some other examples of shared governance. I was able to read through some of the article. I would like to get my hands on the town hall. I know Dr. Cook is usually really good at even sending the trustees some of the announcements and things that go out to the entire campus. But I may have missed that one, so if someone can resend that and bump it up for me.
Would you like, could I send you, I have a list of all of the questions, and I think the town hall was just posted on the portal. So maybe I could send, is it all right if I send the trustees that, or should I send it to you directly?
You can send it to me.
And then Francie's list includes questions that weren't able to be asked, given the time.
Yeah, and all the chat.
It's really helpful.
Yeah, and we're really glad that the town hall was opened up. We think it's a really great first step towards trust. Thank you so much.
No problem.
And with the town hall video, Madam Chair, we can, I can work with Keith Hall, because we have it in the portal. He can work to get it to this committee, so each of the members will have a chance to see that if they want. You know, we just, there's a little bit of size as a consideration. It's not like we can just email that to you. So Keith probably may want to set it up on YouTube, but with a private link. Some of this stuff, you know, obviously, these trustee meetings, broker meetings, we want to broadcast to the world. These types of college conversations, I think it helps to keep within the family to a degree. So we'll make sure that we get that to you.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Bill Johnson. I have a question. When an employee leaves STCC, is there an exit meeting with that employee to see why they're leaving?
Yes.
Okay, so what does that data show why people are leaving? Are they to get a better job, or is it because they're unhappy, or? You know, that's really the crux of the matter, I guess.
Yeah, and this, you'll see that this was a topic of conversation at the town hall. And as I shared, this is perhaps one of the hardest conversations for us as an institution, because there's a confidentiality, if you will, to all these personnel decisions. And it's, the truth is very elusive. There is myth, rumor, innuendo, anecdote. And it's really hard, because unless anyone could really see the personnel file, let's say, or have a conversation with the supervisor and the employee, all we're left is what people's hearsay says on these different things. So this is a real, it's a real difficult conversation. What I've tried to share is that it is painful when colleagues lose colleagues. There is a real feeling for that, and there is no one trying to take that away whatsoever. At the same time, I think this is a really important conversation for the college to know. From me all the way down, we are deeply invested in wanting to support, promote, and invest in the diversity of our employees, particularly employees and leaders of color. Again, I think people are keen to see sort of actions and deeds, not just words with all of that. And I certainly know forums like the Anti-Racism and Inclusion Alliance, which Trustee McDonald has been on, has seen things like this. This is why we brought in an equity consultant to really look at things like what are our efforts to recruit employees? How are we investing in professional development, for example, in our current employees? There's a whole host of things that go into this conversation.
Well, to me, that's something that any business should do. And it's not just for diverted, just to keep good employees. I mean, I only have 70 employees, and what I find is, you know, you have your core, and then there's always just people come and go, it seems like. You know, they leave. Most of the exit meetings I have, they're just leaving because they think they can better themselves. It's nothing to do with, you know, that they thought they were getting treated unfairly, that they're moving to a better position.
I think it's important to point out that the narrative that Dr. Cook tells is one narrative, and there are other narratives in the college that want to make it clear that people were fired and were pushed out. And that, you know, there are different narratives of what has happened and the reasons behind people leaving. And I just think it's important to hear all those voices.
So I would like to say this, because I want to be very careful about,
Absolutely.
you know, talking about people being fired, if that is not what is reflected through their personnel file, right? And so I want to be very careful with that. But one thing that I do want to say is that there has to be some way that we can aggregate, you know, the employees of color, or, you know, employees in general, who have left, and, you know, anonymously be able to gather what some of those reasons were from the exit interviews. And I know that is something that has come up in AIA. The last time I checked, I think we were still kind of at a standstill with getting that information. And so I think it's something that it's worth. You know, thank you for trustee Johnson for asking that question, but I think it's something that is worth strategizing and looking at how we can extract that information and still maintain the privacy of, you know, the prior employee, because it is a problem that needs to be solved. And in order to actually attempt to wholly solve the problem, we need to understand exactly what is going on, if, you know, in fact, there are any things that are going on. But I just want to caution against, you know, stating things like people were fired or forced out. You know, we don't, at this moment, have or have not been presented with any evidence of that. But I'm going to hope that, you know, Dr. Cook would be willing, of course, and Casey to work with us, so we can actually, you know, get some of that information and, you know, not just talk off of hearsay, because that's inappropriate.
Thank you for making that clear.
No problem. Do we have any more questions? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to move on to the next part of the agenda, which is the Netchy and Accreditation debrief, please.
So welcome to the sort of newer version of STCC, where things are a little less, I guess, planned for. I was going to say less scripted, but that's not the intent. It's not like that we're not, we're not sort of prepared. The town hall, I think, as our all-unit Congress co-chairs noted, was, I think, really well-received. I think like a faculty member, I like to prepare. I like to try to make sure that we have information and we're ready to share it. But I also found at the recent town hall to our trustees, people liked more free flow. And we saw that with Francie Riddle and Eric Warren, and we had one of our Ask Me stewards there, Kim Noel, as well as invitation to MCCC. And we sort of went where the conversation went. And so that was part of what this was intended to be. Trustee McDonald, as well as, are there questions from the trustees about accreditation? We've got the cabinet, who are, were right there for the town hall as well, and can also provide a perspective on some of the areas. I mean, I can give you the nutshell version, but all that is to say, we will get a formal letter from Netchy that says, from the visiting team, here are the things that we found. A lot of it's based on the self-study. You already told us these things. We validated them. We'll be moving some recommendations forward, and then we're not going to hear until this fall, quite honestly, about formal re-accreditation of the New England Commission of Higher Education. But I wanted to be sure that we went full circle, that we came all the way back, particularly to this trustee committee, and we're sure if you had any questions, your own comments or observations, that we have this forum for them.
Okay, that seemed like a pretty comprehensive overview of what, you know, to expect as far as accreditation goes. I don't know if any of the other committee members have any questions about that.
I guess I just have a comment more than a question in that, and I didn't ask anybody from Netchy this, but how many they've done that have been virtual? And that is, you know, this entire COVID affected world that we're in, everything took a different, you know, went down a different path. And I don't know, Dr. Cook, I don't know, do you know if they've done other virtual accreditations?
Yes. You know, Netchy, by definition, is only doing them, they're only sending their teams like this. So Oleo Community College was the month before us, or sorry, four or five months before us, and Greenfield Community College was a month before us. All those were virtual as well. And Netchy themselves doesn't want a chance putting a team, let's say, in a compromised situation. So this is their approach, yes, with all of these now.
I was just wondering, I never, I didn't ask, and I was, you know, which makes their, how they handle the situation, different for them. You know, just like many, many other things in our lives. So, okay.
It's funny, one anecdote on that. One member of their team, the individual that had standard seven, which is institutional resources, they are sending that individual to be an on-the-ground observer, if you will. So they're almost sending, after the visit, a person to at least say that they've been on campus. So Charles Cleary is that individual, and I think he's coming later in May, and it's like, he just needs to see the buildings. So, right, like, it's kind of funny that it comes all the way afterwards. They've done all their work. They've talked. They've had been in all their sessions. But he now needs to go into the Student Learning Commons and say, yes, this thing actually exists. I can see $50 million worth of renovation. You know, show me one of these labs that you all talk about. So there is a little bit of sort of final, final fact check. That does happen.
Good.
You know, a little bit of prompting, just again, if you'll indulge me one more minute. So you see the prompt here for all of us is the future conversations. So there were definitely a wonderful list of what they viewed as assets or strength. There are definitely areas that they're going to come back and ask us for more information on, or for us to sort of spend more time thinking about how we, we ourselves together want to improve it. Governance is one of those. And really, what they meant is things like, at times, they saw things as ad hoc, and I think this is why it's appreciated that all unit Congress brought forward the article. It's great to read about other institutions and how they see this work, the culture building. You know, I think about, here's just a really easy example. In the name of health and wellbeing, pre-pandemic, the college had contemplated becoming a smoke-free campus. Pretty typical in higher education. There's a lot of sort of understanding and wherewithal for this kind of public health outlook. We never quite got there. And so how do we pick that conversation back up? And how do we build a policy and a practice together, trustees, employees, administration, governance bodies, to become a smoke-free campus? You know, this is, this is that idea of what's our model of governance to help us get there? So look for that. I think that's the kind of thing that Netchy wants us talking about and working on. And then strategic planning, right? Our strategic plan has effectively sunset. So we will need to pick that back up starting this fall, and it'll be comprehensive, just like the self-study, I think, is a real win for the institution. The creation of our next strategic plan is also just a tremendous opportunity, again, to build towards where we want to be as an institution.
Okay, Dr. Cook, you can also segue into the president's perspective then.
Thank you. On the personnel update, you have this information, trustees. I want to just highlight and call out some of those changes there. As I shared with the full board last month, we are tremendously grateful for the work that Denise Hurst has invested in the college. She is leaving us for the Community Foundation into a wonderful leadership role there, so we're thrilled for her. There are no retirees to announce. You'll see that. So a lot of times, if we're given, for example, years' notice, there's an incentive that we provide. But we also had done a significant retirement incentive over the summer. So there's no real news on that front. Some of the hires to call out in that, we have a couple of people returning to us. So John Tudren, you may have also seen that news, is coming back into his position as controller. I know Andrea Nathanson is looking forward to having him join her team. Our thanks again to Dorothy Younger, who really held that position down well. Also in facilities, Karen Merrill is an individual that had been at the college for a long, long time. She had taken a job at Westfield State. We're thrilled to have her back. She's coming back as a manager in our facilities department. So it's good to see those kinds of returns. We also hired, and it's a pretty significant position, the name Sean Pettis was on that list as our Director of Infrastructure and Security. As we've talked about in some of our other meetings, you can't put enough of a premium on trying to make sure that our, that our systems are robust, that our cybersecurity is well in place. This is a first for us, so this is a significant investment in a position like that. So on the personnel side, these are really helpful. Let me transition to the second piece there. So you may have seen a new face, relatively new face trustee. So Professor Vanessa Hill, Dr. Hill, if you just wave to kind of get people to see if they've got their whole screen up that way. This has been a long time in planning, if you will. I can't remember how many months back I sounded out Vanessa, but it's tremendous to be able to announce that she will be our inaugural Foundation Innovation Fellow. It's a, it's a new approach at the college. It's a very intentional approach. And if you had a chance to read the summary, and I'm going to send out a campus email with some of these details and to also celebrate Vanessa taking on this role. This is a real nod to our work to be an anti-racist institution. Vanessa did a whole dissertation on developmental math education. This is one of those signature areas for any community college in the United States, where students, particularly students of color, get bogged down, who are often obligated to assess reading, writing, and math skills. And there's a lot of problematic research. There's a lot of good research that indicates problematic outcomes from that type of a system. And so a lot of community colleges have reformed themselves. They've taken these very long, multi-class developmental sequences and really shrunk them down. And that's really what Vanessa is going to share a little bit about tonight, is how, over the course of the year, she's really taken on this leadership role to help us, essentially, for once and for all, really reform our development on that. So I'm thrilled. It is not like a sabbatical or some of the other tools that we use with faculty. We also needed a sort of trial. We don't know if we can afford this model. And we know that there are other people who probably have great ideas and projects and proposals they would want to submit, but we needed to come out with this signature and significant one. So again, I'm really thrilled with Vanessa willing to take this on. So let me turn it to her and have her share a little bit more about, about the year and the work ahead. Thank you. Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So just a little bit about the project. It's going to be multiple layers to it. The first thing I'll do when I start this July is start with the research. I think it's really important to ground everything in research. So I have some literature reviews that I'll be looking at. I also will be taking the time looking at fellow institutions to see what they've done and to learn the lessons in an easier way, we hope. The Board of Higher Ed has put out some recommendations that I'll be looking at, and I know that Commissioner Santiago has a big charge. He really emphasizes on the equity agenda. And that's what this project comes down to. So I'll be taking a developmental math sequence and making it into a single modular course. And students will have to, depending on their major and what classes they have to take, they might have to only take one module, all the way up to four modules, depending on if they're going into the STEM career. And so I'll be spending the time working with my amazing colleagues, who have already done a ton of work and putting us into a comprehensive package and working with, you know, chemistry and biology, and making sure that we're meeting whatever the prereqs are to make sure that the students are successful and they have the math skills necessary to go into the science and engineering technology courses. So that's a big part of what I'll be doing. I'll be rewriting the curriculum, developing OER, the Open Resource Materials, so that when a student does sign up for this course, there'll be no additional charge for them. Everything will be open access. We'll be writing our own booklets with guided notes and making our own YouTube videos so that everything, a student walking in on day one has complete access to everything they need to be successful in the course. So that's a big part of what I'll be building out. I'll also be looking at placement exams. We had to take a look at them when we went out for COVID. And we'll be revamping those, looking, pulling the data, making really sure that the placements are valid, and if we need to revamp them some more, looking at how people are placing. We know that students of color place in the developmental education at two to three times the rate as their white counterparts. And if you do place into developmental education, you have a roughly 10% to 15% chance of actually completing successfully a college-level math course. So we really are doing this to move the lens along, so that these students, all students, but especially students of color who are falling behind in this process, have a fair chance of getting their degree, which is what our goal is, in as short amount of time as possible. Some other things I'll be doing is building some relationships, not only just with the stakeholders on campus, but also off-campus. We want to make sure financial aid is not going to be an issue. We also want to look at some of the local schools and see how we can support the math teachers there to make the pathway a little bit cleaner and smoother when their students do come into stick. And then just examining our courses overall, and I will be doing this with a large part with the math department, who, like I said, they've already done such amazing work, but nobody really has time to sit down and pull it together. So we wind up piecemealing stuff. And this will be an opportunity that, that we really can do a lot of work. And this will be an opportunity that, that we really can do a lot of work, very intense work over the year. So that when we come around for fall of 2022, the goal is to have everything in place and up and running. So if you have any questions for me?
Thank you so much. So this is a long time coming because I remember my first trustee retreat. This was a bit of a big to-do when Dr. Cook presented us with that developmental math. And many of us at the table were looking at it a little baffled. And so we were, you know, ready to kind of point fingers and march from everywhere to the mayor's office, to the state house to solve for this issue. So I'm really excited to see this happening. Now, for clarification, and, and with this fellowship, does that mean that now students will probably have a shorter footprint in remediation math, which will allow them to further stretch their, their financial aid funds?
Absolutely. And, and we're hoping, again, we have to have a lot of meetings to iron this all out. But let's say a student, for his major, they just need math or liberal arts or statistics course. That first module will be built out to make sure if they need any foundation piece, they would only have to take the first module. If they finish it, then technically, because we're offering like fall one and fall two and spring one and spring two, they could just pay for that one module, go for the second half of the semester and be done with their math requirements. So it's all designed to really make sure that everything's linking up to what they actually need for that next college-level course, whether it's math or whether it's in the sciences and technology. Because that's where we find it the most, some business as well. But it'll shorten their sequence. That's what the whole goal is. It's just the one standalone course that's module, the modules. And they're only going to have to be, take what they want. If they do decide, you know, I took this class and I learned a little bit more about STEM and I want to go back. Well, they can pick up where their module left off. They don't have to go back and restart. And it gives them flexibility because it's all OER, that really they can come in and out of it. You know, whatever suits their life. So if they do make a switch of majors or something, that we're going to keep that in mind and we want to make that transition as easy as possible.
Great.
I know we're getting somewhere when, when the, the chair of our internist committee is sort of asking about hell implications and financial aid implications. I, I do because I, I remember the reaction, right? Trustee McDonald and the idea of, we saw painfully that at our front door, when we assessed math disproportionately, students did not have that GPA, which gave them a sort of end around. And that's the thing, I think the metaphor is, is a little flawed because it seems like somehow we're either doing disservice or setting students up for failure. I know math faculty have been really invested in making sure it's not like students just go to college-level math and then they fail that. What we see is research actually is our friend on this. That's why these sequences have been shortened is because we see that students are successful when they have an opportunity to move quicker to that. So what was, by the way, for everyone, up to nine credits worth? Potentially three semesters worth, if you were a part-time student, taking one class at a time. To now, in the hands of Dr. Hill and colleagues and her work over the year, the ability to shrink that down, she says modules, but that's potentially a credit, right? From nine credits total to maybe down to four credits. And even to her example, you may only have to take one credit, a two-week primer of sorts, cost you a couple hundred bucks maybe. And you can then jump out and then second half of the semester, you're potentially ready to take statistics. That's what this is going to do for us. Truly, it's, it's, we, we are there. I know things take a long time sometimes in higher education. But I think this year is going to be incredibly valuable for us.
Any other questions or comments? Any old business? New business? Okay, as you all can see, the next meeting is to be determined upon approval for our next meeting calendar year. Can't believe it's been that much time so soon already. Oh my goodness. Wow. Okay, with that being said, then Matt, can you do a roll call to adjourn the meeting, please?
Yes, Janey McDonald.
Yes.
Mary Kate Murren. William Johnson.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito.
Yes.
And Alexander Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Thanks, everybody. Take care.
Bye.